I want to welcome you to the Wednesday, February 28th, 2024, regular meeting of the Palm Springs Planning Commission. Can I have the staff or the report on the posting of the agenda, please?
Do you want to begin with roll call, Madam Chair?
Oh, yes. Roll call is not on our agenda. Would you call the roll, please?
Chair Wermick?
Present.
Vice Chair Elian?
Here.
Commissioner Callardine?
Here.
Commissioner Baker?
Here.
Commissioner Miller?
Present.
Commissioner Murphy?
Present.
Commissioner Rotman?
Here.
Thank you. Now can I have a report on the posting of the agenda, please?
Absolutely. Madam Chair, the agenda was available for public access at the City Hall Exterior Bulletin Board and available also online by nine o'clock PM on Thursday, February 22nd, in accordance with our policies and procedures.
Thank you. At this point, it's we're looking at the acceptance of the agenda, and my understanding is that the agenda is as it's printed, except that item 4A will be continued until a date certain?
That is correct, Madam Chair. The applicant, in response to questions that have been raised, as well as some some technical issues that we were working through, has requested some additional time to work through those items. We are planning to bring that back to you at the next meeting in March.
So we'll set the date at the time that we deal with it. If anyone is here for Merelon, if you're here for Merelon, I want to let you know that we're not taking that up tonight. Thank you. And if there's anybody in on the Zoom call who's here for Merelon, would you let them know? Okay. Can I have a motion to accept the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. At this point, it's a time for public comment. We have, I believe, both item 2A and 2B are public comment items, so that this time's been set aside for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on the consent calendar agenda items and items in the general subject matter jurisdiction of our commission. Please note that we can't take action on items that are not posted on the agenda. Each speaker will have three meeting, three minutes. Testimony for public hearing can be offered at this time or at the time of the hearing. Members of the public who would like to comment on the consent or new and we on the consent are directed to comment under this portion of the agenda. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak? Anyone in the audience?
I see no one in the audience. Madam Chair, there is one person on the Zoom call. If you would like to speak on the consent calendar or a non-public hearing item, please raise your hand, and I will allow you to speak. Otherwise, you can speak during those public hearings. Seeing no speakers, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The public hearing is closed. We're at the consent calendar. We have one item, which is the approval of the minutes of January 24th, 2024. Are there any comments on this, or can I have a motion to approve?
I'll move approval.
I did just I did see one typo on page three at the top. Palo Verde trees is a D instead of a T. Just a spelling error.
That's how I got the book.
The French word for green instead of the Spanish.
And with with that correction in spelling, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Can you call the roll, please?
Chair Wermick?
Yes.
Chair Elian?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Rotman?
Yes.
Commissioner Callardine?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Thank you. The next item is public hearings, and the first is a request by DTPSB3 LLC for a development agreement related to an approved mixed-use development involving 45 residential condominium units and retail on Block B of the downtown Palm Springs specific plan at the northeast corner of Bolardo Road and Museum Way. The staff recommendation is approval of the agreement. Can we have a staff report, please?
Yes, good evening, Madam Chair and Planning Commissioners. The matter before you is a proposed development agreement application between the project proponent for Block B of the downtown Palm Springs specific plan and the city of Palm Springs. The agreement speaks specifically to two entitlements, both involving the same development project related to, first, the major architectural application to construct the new building on Block B. It is a 73,000-square-foot building with 45 residential units and ground floor commercial. The second component is a tentative tract map for condominium purposes related to that development. The project was originally approved in January of 2021 by the City Council, and subsequent to that, as a condition of a to comply with the condition of approval, the item was or the project was reviewed by the Architectural Advisory Committee in May of 2021, where they looked at a ground floor activation plan for the proposed project. And so just to give you an idea of what the project is, this is some site perspectives, or this is a site perspective of the project. And this is, again, the project itself is located on the east side of Bolardo Road, north of Museum Way. It is just north of the Kimpton or the Rowan Hotel. And as you can see here, it is a six-story building and primarily residential in nature and then some ground floor retail. So the view that you see here is if you were standing northwest of the project site, looking to the southeast. Another site perspective of the project here, looking from a vantage point south of the project site to the north and specifically down the patio that's on the east side of the proposed building. You can see on the right side of the screen the existing two-story building that is currently fronting Palm Canyon, and that would be the backside of this building or of that building. As I mentioned, when the project was approved, the AAC looked at a ground floor activation plan. So the AAC did review this specific plan here that you see, showing various components of how the applicant proposed to activate the ground floor with various lighting techniques, landscaping, art, and proposed vendors. So the development agreement request before you, the applicant is proposing this because of a legal dispute with the Department of Industrial Relations, which has delayed their ability to determine the project costs and exercise the approvals or the entitlements. So the the legal dispute has been ongoing for a couple of years or for several years now. This item was or this project is kind of most being most impacted now because the claim is actually related to various other pieces of the overall downtown redevelopment. Obviously, those, for the most part, are done, and this is one of the most current project entitlements that would be most affected with the legal dispute that is currently happening. So that is why this request is being brought forward. The proposal essentially extends the entitlements through July of 2030. So that is roughly an additional five years beyond what our code typically allows. That's, you know, as some commissioners may recall, we did revise our time extension ordinance to cap the most an entitlement could be active for for four years. That was a revision because we continually were getting time extension requests several years ago, and projects were continually getting extended. So eventually, when we made that ordinance change, there was a cap that was that would limit the total amount of it, entitlement extensions that one could submit. So typically, an entitlement is valid for two years, and then after that, an applicant can request an additional two years for a total of four. In this case, they have received a one-year extension from their original expiration date, and they could exercise one additional extension, which would carry the entitlement through May of 2025, if that was approved by the Planning Commission. This would essentially extend that an additional five more years. And so the development agreement is the correct mechanism to allow an extension beyond what a code might, and that's why they're proposing it. And the reason, again, this is being brought forward is because of this legal dispute. The city is also a party to that legal dispute. So that's another reason why staff is supporting this and bringing it forward to the commission. The so the one additional thing I'll mention related to development agreements, typically, development agreements that the city has processed in the past, we've seen timeframes that allow up to 20 years. This is a five-year term. We typically start at 10 years. So for a five-year request, and that being really the only major element of the development agreement, staff felt that this was a reasonable request and not consistent with, you know, not consistent with what we typically see, which is a 10- to 20-year request. In terms of what efforts the applicant has made to exercise the entitlements, the final map related to the tentative tract map, which is identified in the development agreement, is actually scheduled for City Council action tomorrow night, and it would be recorded thereafter. So he's actually very the applicant is very close to having that piece of the project finalized and exercised. In terms of the major architectural approval, that has been through the building permit process. They've gone through three reviews with the third-party plan check reviewer, and that was kind of put on hold as the applicant has been finalizing or dealing with the legal dispute. That being said, the building permit review is, I would say, probably 95% complete. There are some minor changes that the applicant would have to do to identify or to respond to the last couple of comments that were received, as well as comply with other department requirements, but they're they're mostly through that process. When we look at what the development agreement content has, the there's, you know, it's it's pretty typical for what we've seen in the past for a development agreement. We have recitals that identify some of the backstory of why the agreement is being proposed. And then we have 13 articles that are part of the agreement and some that I'm drawing attention to here on the screen. Section 3.01, the effective date for this development agreement would occur after it was approved or if it is approved on that date. The term of the development agreement is identified in section 3.02, and as I mentioned, that would be through July of 2030. The development agreement also identifies the public benefits that are provided by the developer, and those are in section 4.03. So they've listed some items there that with this project, they are essentially benefits that are provided by by the applicant. And then lastly, there is section 7.10, where we identify the annual review that that would occur as a part of this development agreement as and as also required by the city's development agreement ordinance. One thing that I would note, too, as well, when talking with the developer in terms of a timeline, the applicant would need to exercise the entitlements within the the term of the agreement, which would be basically pulling a building permit by no later than July of 2030. The agreement also does specify that the construction would need to be completed within 24 months of the the building permit issuance. And so that was a timeframe that the applicant had proposed. So staff's recommendation tonight is that the commission review and evaluate the findings that staff presented in the staff report relative to section 94.8 of our zoning code. And those are there's five criteria that the Planning Commission would have to make to make a recommendation affirmatively to the City Council and and approve the development agreement. Ultimately, the City Council would review the development agreement as required by our code and have to approve the agreement. The we identified that environmental review was done as a part of the specific plan pursuant to section 15162 of the SEQUID guidelines. Further review would typically not be required. So that's part of the recommendation that the Planning Commission would make to the City Council, should they should the commission choose to recommend approval of the development agreement this evening. So with that, I'll conclude my presentation, and I am happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I might, just for a second before before you continue, just to give a little bit more flavor to why the city is taking this position on this and sort of a little background on the litigation, without getting too into the weeds, because I know the applicant will speak to it. When we say the city is a party to litigation, we are supportive of the applicant's position with the DIR, and we are involved in those discussions actively and the litigation that's going on there. And so in discussion between the city attorney and their attorneys and the applicant team, we are taking this route and this course of action because the additional one-year extension that they have the right to apply for under the zoning code frankly wouldn't give enough time for us all to resolve those ongoing discussions with the DIR. And so, you know, the thinking was the six years that is included in this development agreement is probably a conservative amount of time, meaning sort of, you know, the longest amount of time that we hope it will take to resolve that. And certainly, our goal is to resolve things much more quickly than that. And I think the applicant's goal is certainly to begin work as soon as as soon as they can. But between our city attorney and their city attorney, who are at the table as part of those discussions, they all felt that six years was the appropriate amount of time to give us coverage to get through that process and ideally realize this project. So that is why we are taking an affirmative position on this and recommending approval of it outside of the normal course of the entitlement extension process because of the extenuating circumstances related to this disagreement with DIR and the time that will be necessary to resolve that so that we can realize this this project. So I just wanted to add that context.
Questions of staff? Commissioner Rotman, let me start with you.
Yeah, thank you. Just a few questions. Does the applicant have an opportunity then at the at the end of six years, does he have an opportunity to request another extension? Or is this the limit of it?
This would be the limit of it. That doesn't mean that doesn't mean to say that there could not be an amendment at some point in the future, but we don't expect that that would be the case.
And the amendment would come back before you and the City Council.
Okay. And the annual review that you mentioned, how what does that look like? Does that come back before us, or is it done administratively?
Typically, it's done administratively, correct.
Okay.
Unless it's determined that terms of the agreement may be in violation.
Okay. And does this development, other than the timeframes we've mentioned, does this development agreement look different than the previous one?
Than the previous one for?
The one that's currently in place and?
So this is actually the only this is the first development agreement that's being proposed. There was a development agreement proposed when there was a Virgin Hotel project on this site.
Okay.
That went away. And then when this project went through the entitlement process, we didn't actually establish a development agreement. So this is actually the first established. We're establishing a development agreement now, given what the circumstances are for this project. We don't typically see a development agreement. It's not one of the common tools that are used here in Palm Springs, but sometimes we do have these applications.
Okay. And then one more question regarding the permit, the plan check. Assuming they does it also get extended for the six years? I mean, I don't know if they're going to go ahead and actually finish the the plan check, or they're going to wait until they're ready to start. But would it extend also if they did pull it now, would it extend also with the development agreement?
That would actually go under its own process with our building official. So I'm not entirely sure if that means they would have to, you know, that whatever work has been done, the building official would have to determine that that may continue or if they needed to do a code update, that would be something that they would have to make a decision on.
But I think one of the restrictions that and one of the basis for this development agreement in part is they are not able to pull the permit for all sorts of reasons, but in part because we can't determine the valuation of the project and therefore the building permit fees while this DIR issue is outstanding. And so I'm not sure that they can certainly speak in more detail to where they are in that process since it's with building. But as I understand it, they don't have the ability to actually pull the permit. So as I understand it, that process will likely sort of go on hold, and maybe they'll work through some of the technical issues and then would be able to pick it up once they have a little more certainty with what's going to happen with DIR.
Okay, all right. And I think that's it. Thank you.
Commissioner Callardine, do you have questions?
Okay, is that on now? Okay. I forgot how to use these. I had some concerns about this one's going in, but the planning director very effectively addressed my concerns, at least for this particular project. I think we may have overdone ourselves on the extension process when we revised the zoning a few years ago, and that I would rather see us see us have a process for an extraordinary extension that's in that part of the zoning code, where we could make findings directly related to the extension as a part of that process. That's something we consider and could consider in the zoning code update or something like that. Obviously, it's not going to be good for this time.
You can save that comment, yeah.
That's it.
Commissioner Murphy?
I don't have a question at this point.
Commissioner Miller?
No questions.
Yeah, I do have a question. So if I'm reading this correctly, so the bottom line is simply whether or not to pay prevailing wages. Is that the root cause of them being here tonight?
That's correct. That's the dispute that's going on with the Department of Industrial Relations.
And secondly, if they, well, you probably can't address this, so if you, if the plaintiffs are unsuccessful in court, what happens then? Do they appeal, or do they, then they have to pay prevailing wages? I mean, that's a question you may not be able to answer.
I think I would defer to them to answer that, simply because, well, the city is a party to the litigation. David and I aren't directly involved. But as I understand it, again, the six years that we've chosen is to give, is to account for all eventualities in that process, whether it's continuing an appeal or pursuing some kind of settlement agreement. But the six years was the amount of time we felt necessary to allow all of those options to play out, how it impacts the project, if they're told to pay prevailing wage, or what they, what they choose to do next. I think we'll let them speak to that. Thank you.
Commissioner Layton?
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. Understanding that if we decide not to approve the development agreement, it does not get extended, explain to me the timeframe, what would happen next and what the timeframe would be for option B, which presumably would be a sale of the property to another developer who would develop, but would that get us anywhere any faster?
So the applicant has also submitted a time extension for the last additional year that they have available to them under the code. So I suspect they would continue to pursue that in hopes of getting the additional one year extension, and hoping the legal process plays out before then, so they could pull the permit. If that wasn't approved, or presuming that that was approved, so this process could play out, that would get them through May of next year, and then, so May of '25. If the development agreement and, if the development agreement wasn't also approved, and that extension wasn't also approved, the entitlements would expire, and then the applicant would either continue with holding the property until they were able to either create a new project that may be viable, or they may, as you mentioned, sell the property to another developer, who would then have to do their own due diligence and go through the transaction process, creation of development plans for a proposed entitlement, and go through the entitlement process, which, you know, could take six to 12 months, and then go through the building permit process and whatever mapping action, if one was needed, both the tentative and the final mapping process. So it essentially starts over.
And vice chair, Layton, I think you're on the right track, and, or I shouldn't assume what track you were going down, but in, I don't know that we would gain much out of starting the process again, right? We would likely, through all of the processes David is describing, likely not be in a position to issue building permits until around the same time that this agreement is giving us anyways, by going through that whole process.
Okay. Thank you. I also have a couple of questions on some of the findings that are included in the staff report. In particular, number three, the development agreement is in conformity with a public convenience, general welfare, and good land use practice. One of the findings indicates that the development agreement would provide greater certainty of costs associated with the project. I can understand how this benefits the developer, but given that the agreement should develop, should provide benefits to both the public and the developer, can you tell me how the public benefits from the developer having greater certainty in cost?
With the greater certainty in costs, the assumption there is if the developer has his pro forma complete, does exercise the entitlement, and begins construction, if, if, if it's not certain, and there is an additional cost that's been required of them, that might result in a project that is partially started, or started and partially complete, and not ultimately finished for several years or longer, depending on what we've seen some other projects do in the city. So essentially, what we're saying here is when they have more certainty with what it is going to cost to build the project, and they have all of that financing in order, there will be less likelihood that a project delay might occur in the event the costs change after they've already started construction, which would, in other projects that we've seen in the city, become an eyesore potentially, or nuisance for people around the site.
So where the public is less likely to have one more stalled project in downtown Palm Springs, and that...
Correct.
Would be the benefit. Okay. Then, a little bit further on, it talks to about improved general welfare by virtue of activating the vacant lot downtown, and that it will reduce exposure to public inconvenience. I presume by the exposure to public inconvenience, if a project takes two years to build, it takes two years to build regardless of when you start it, but the inconvenience wraps around back to the potential for the project not being completed by the original developer under the original terms. And so that would be the benefit to the public, that we're less likely to have a failed or stalled project?
Correct.
Okay.
Am I assuming that when we get to motions, you will have some language corrections?
Maybe. And then one more question. Talking about the environmental document, and I appreciate the fact that you brought that up, and the fact that that was originally approved quite a while ago, I noticed, too, that it talks about, or that there's, under SEQA, we don't need to do a new environmental document unless there have been changed conditions, significant changed conditions. What would come to mind is if somebody were to oppose the project, they would point out the things like museum drive being closed, and does that change? Can you tell me why something like that does not impose a requirement to reanalyze the project for SEQA?
So, under SEQA law, there's essentially provisions that allow tiering to happen. So in this case, we had the specific plan that was adopted that said, with this intensity and density of development, there's going to be X, Y, and Z traffic impacts. There will be these impacts to air quality, all these impacts to, et cetera. So a whole list of things that are evaluated, and that's on the baseline of what was there at the time. And so at the time, it was a defunct mall that had limited access, except the streets that may have been around it. So at that time, with this new development that is coming under the specific plan, we know that those impacts, the greatest extent of the impacts that might happen, and anything that would be developed with, in accordance with the specific plan, would be less than significant under the EIR that was conducted in 2009. So the baseline back then was a defunct mall, with, if, in the case of, or in the example of the streets that were created, that enhances traffic, yes, but I think the original baseline was, there was an empty mall. So from there, we know that, yes, there's new projects or new developments on, within this specific plan area, and the SEQA law allows cities and counties and jurisdictions to refer to that EIR when approving individual pieces of that project, as, even though it's a larger project for what was reviewed back then. Or this project is a smaller piece of that overall larger evaluation that was done in 2009.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Couple of questions, and I think I may be the only commissioner who was here in 2021, when this came before us. So just looking back at that, I think you said that the determination that they received was from, on prevailing wages, was not only that they would have to pay prevailing wages on this project, but all of the projects previously developed under the downtown specific plan?
That's correct. The claim that was filed was related to the hotel and the other developments within the overall development.
So the city's interest in this, and the reason the city's in the litigation, is with those kinds of requirements, we might not see the rest of the specific plan completed. And so we have an interest in not seeing the downtown that we invested in finished and completed. So that, that's the, that's the basis for the city participation. Am I correct?
I think that's certainly one of, one of the reasons that we're involved, and I think there is also just a disagreement over the DIR's interpretation of the law and case law, and I think the applicant can certainly speak to that again more eloquently than we can. But as I understand it, you know, both we and the applicant have taken a position that there's no basis to require prevailing wage in this case, given the history and the context. DIR is taking a different position, and that's where we disagree. But I certainly, the state, other statements that you've made are true as well.
But it's one of, it's one of the interests that we have, is seeing the completion of something that the city's been working towards since the early 2000s. Then I have a couple of questions regarding, and concerns regarding the language. And if you'd put up the slide on the key, the key provisions, again, the one that you had, that one, absolutely. What, what I don't see, and I was also here, I think, for the other development agreement that we have in Serena Park, which is the developers' obligations. And it seems to me that we have a provision, which is 709, timing of project construction and completion, and then language that really relates to that in a different section, which is annual review, which says that the developer, a development schedule showing initiation of construction prior to the expiration of the agreement, completion within 24 months at the request of the planning director. That seems to me, am I correct, that that's in the wrong place? And it, because it isn't, it seems that the obligations I think the developer has are to complete, complete the building review process, the 5% that's left, pay the fees, and complete and finish construction within 24 months before the expiration of the term. Those are, those are the only requirements that I see in this document, but they're not laid out in a way that is crystal clear.
Right. And I think that the sort of traditional sort of milestones that we would have in a Serena Park-type development agreement, where there are a lot more steps to complete before we get to the point of a building permit, is why you're seeing a much more fully realized agreement there.
Right, but we could, we could, within our purview, just ask that those be spelled out in the agreement that goes to city council, a little more clearly.
I, I would want to consult with lawyers, certainly, but I think that you could make the recommendation that we have that conversation and look at, at either shifting that language or mirroring it in 7.09. We can look at that for sure.
It would be either, but, but some, some schedule, some sense that, that there are things that the developer does in return for the five year, the five years, the additional five years that we're giving them as an extension. And then the last is public benefit, and the thought I have, and is in our purview, to ask the applicant here to look at the enhance, some of the enhancements they proposed for the area, and doing some of them now specifically on the street, that's the Walk Street that's in front of Clandesino, but doing some, some enhancements to make that more attractive in the six to eight years we're going to be waiting to see the project developed. Is that something that we can look at?
I think that that's a conversation to have with the applicant when they come up, see what they've done or are willing to do, and certainly, as the planning commission, you can make that recommendation to council.
And, and there's no obligation at this point on the applicant to pay any of the permit fees. Is that correct?
That's correct, and that relates to the comment I had made earlier about, you know, I don't even, our understanding is we can't even accurately calculate the building fees that would be required at this point in time.
Because the value of the property will be valued at the time that it's going to be built, and it may also, I mean, the wages that are paid may go in, that goes into cost. Do you evaluate based on cost or based on an appraisal?
David, I don't know if you know more, but...
It's based on the cost, yeah.
So that you absolutely have no idea. Okay. I think that's, my question's, are there any additional? The matter, we, I'm going to open the public hearing. The city is also a party to this. You don't have testimony additional, do you?
Not in addition to the staff report, no.
And if the applicant is here, if you'd come forward, the people that are going to testify? Oh, there is a public hearing. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak? And you are first, and then the public. We have one person still in queue.
Does this work? Yeah. Good evening, Madam Chair, and planning commissioners. Thank you, David and Chris, for a very thorough staff report and answering the questions. I appreciate that. So a lot of questions we asked, or one of my points we already mentioned, so I'm trying to be a little shorter. This is all about the DIR dispute. In simplified terms, the DIR is challenging the city's end grid's position that the downtown project phase one was exempt from prevailing wages. While the judge, in a ruling last summer, did not agree with the DIR's analysis, the judge ultimately ruled that phase one of the downtown revitalization project was subject to prevailing wages. So we have appealed that decision to the California Court of Appeals. The appeal could take 18 to 24 months. So in September last year, due to the timeframe and the evolved legal fees with the projected and continuous litigation with DIR, grid development, together with the city of Palm Springs, decided to approach the DIR to discuss a settlement of the matter, so we could start construction of block B much earlier than 2027, meaning to wait for the outcome of the appeal. It took unfortunately a while to get the face-to-face meeting to discuss our proposal. The discussions are ongoing, with the most recent meeting just occurring last week, where the city was present as well. So while we feel confident that we can resolve this amicably, it is not a sure thing, and that's why we required this development agreement. The proposed development agreement would provide us accurate time to either settle the matter, or receive, as I said before, a ruling sometime in 2026 by the appellate court. This timeline is much more realistic, and basically would allow us to mitigate the risk that our entitlements would expire. To say this, to date, we have invested probably about $2 million in the entitlements, including construction documents, which have been 99% complete. Once the DIR, or once this is resolved, and hopefully in our favor, obviously, we plan to pull a building permit immediately. However, depending, but which year we're going to build that permit, it might require that we have to go through an additional plan check. And if there are any other building upgrades or new building codes, then our plans need to be adjusted to those no requirements, and require then a change in plans. I don't know how long that would take. That's why I don't want to put a time limit, how quickly I need to pull the permit. As to public benefits, et cetera, staff mentioned already, we're going to record a final map tomorrow, and that means the unit count, the square footage, and the height of the project is vesting. So what we're really only asking here is that the design of the building envelope is being extended, or gives us the opportunity that we don't have to come back until this is resolved. The art commission requested to activate the site as a graffiti park, which grid is monitoring and cleaning daily. Then we activated the site already with two tenants, Cali- Then we activated the site already with two tenants, Calistino and Canopy, on Market Street. As to your question, Mrs. Mermitz, we certainly can look at other areas here, but we have worked very closely with Canopy and Calistino what else they need to make that area nicer. And we believe it is a very nice area the way it is right now. There are planters on the other side, and both restaurants don't want anything to happen. They like the way it is. We discussed additional seating outside their restaurant premises. They denied that, they didn't want that there because they're afraid, as long as the homeless problem in Palm Springs is not resolved, that homeless people would sit there and impact their ongoing businesses. So, we looked at that. Anything else that I want to say? No.
Can you just identify yourself for the public record?
Oh, I apologize. My name is Michael Braun. I'm the president of Grid Development. And I think you need to ask me about the disclosure.
Yes.
Document that this is accurate, also stated the wrong way, so I apologize.
Right. There is one question, which is the public integrity disclosure document that was signed today, this is your signature, and it was signed today?
Correct.
And so, there'll be a correction in the record in terms of the date that you'll supply tomorrow?
Yeah, we're going to send it in tomorrow, by the way.
Thank you.
Was there another question that I have not answered that you, oh, with regard to the question, Mrs. Airline, we have a development agreement, would we ever sell that site? No. The reason why we don't want to sell anything in downtown is we want to control all the sites, that we don't have any disputes with any other owner of what they're building there, impacting potentially the hotel that we have built or any of the retailers. So, fortunately and unfortunately, the hotel and the retailers are all in decline, and even with this building that's coming, that will be also part of leases with future tenants that need to be disclosed, how they can behave and what they can do there. And as I said before, the two tenants that we have since provided spaces, Calistino and Canopy, they're looking forward to that building will be built because we want to create a much more intimate atmosphere on Market Street and not have that empty lot in front of it where something gets lost. And then Vince is going to make a comment, Vince Whitaker, he's our attorney on this matter, with regards to the questions on prevailing wages, because there seems to be a little confusion, which I'll let him talk to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Vince Whitaker, counsel for the developer related to the DIR dispute. So, Commissioner Baker, you had some very specific questions, which I'm happy to answer for you, sir.
And so, what is the delta between the prevailing wage and non-pervailing wage? What dollar amount are you saving?
It's a great question, and right now, you know, we've had some discussions with the DIR regarding that. They've started, at our request, to do some level of sampling to figure out which trades were affected and what that looks like. Unfortunately, it's not that I'm trying to obfuscate the issue, we're in some discussions, and I am not free to disclose those numbers. What I can tell you is, going back to the genesis of the dispute, because there's been a lot of changes within the prevailing wage laws and what the state has done. So, going back to when the project financing agreement was signed in, I believe, the end of 2011, Palm Springs had a municipal code exempting itself from prevailing wages under its home rule authority. The municipal code at the time, if memory recalls, was 7.03.060, which said that the city can, it's what's referred to in my world as the home rule authority. So, at that time, the city had the right to exempt itself from the payment of prevailing wages, even for public works of improvement. In 2012, a case called Vista came down, it was a fight in Vista, California, regarding a firehouse and some other things that were going on, and the California Court of Appeals agreed that that project was not subject to prevailing wage based on a similar municipal code in the city of Vista at the time. That went up to the California Supreme Court, California Supreme Court agreed. Subsequent to that, the legislature changed the provisions of the code at the state level under the labor codes, and those took effect, effective January 1st, 2015, which forced, and that's the same time the redevelopment agencies were going away as well. And so, as of January 1st, 2015, any project that is prevailing, that is a public work of improvement in the state of California is subject to prevailing wage. So, we have a very discreet snapshot in time that we're fighting over in terms of when this project was entered into actual executed contracts and the existing municipal codes at the time.
So, your argument is that your development agreement took place at a period that precluded you to use prevailing wages?
Correct. It wasn't a development agreement, just for clarification, was referred to when the city entered into it with the developer at the time, it was a project financing agreement.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Other questions of the applicant? Commissioner Murphy?
Looking at the staff report, it looks like the applicant's position is that the project, as approved, would no longer be financially feasible because of the cost burdens placed on the project if the litigation fails. It doesn't say this in the report, but I'm wondering also, two, three, four years can go by, and that could also dramatically increase your cost structures. So, I guess I'm asking for a best and worst-case scenario, if the litigation, like, how close are you to having to be in a position where you cancel the project in two or three years because litigation fails and/or the cost structures go up during that period of time?
Well, costs have exploded, as everybody knows, during COVID in the last two, three years. So, the biggest problem for any developer is, even if you get a cost estimate, and you give it to your lender, and you want to move forward during the construction process, because you never secure 100% of all the trades, you secure up to 70%, then you go on construction. The bad experience in the past three years, those 30% cost increases that you couldn't hedge out, made the project impose negative leverage, as I like to say. Yeah, so the developer had to pony up more money and couldn't get the return, or potentially had to feed the project for the coming years. To answer your question, the market is the market, the costs are the costs. So, our issue is that if the court rules that we have to pay prevailing wage, then we have to pay prevailing wages for Phase One. And that means I need to find the funds to pay that, and then I move forward with Block B as a project. Will the project, will this particular project be exposed to prevailing wages? That will hopefully be resolved in that agreement as well. Right now, we don't get any public benefits. Every public benefits or any support for the project came from the city, happened in Phase One. There's nothing on the table that we're asking the city to contribute in this project, so therefore, it should be exempt from prevailing wages. Yeah, so to answer your question, we move forward with the project, that's our plan. We would like to have what we believe, we built the retail that the community wanted, we got the retail here because of the hotel, we had a second hotel in the plans, but we believe that what Palm Springs needs to mitigate the seasonality is more permanent residences. And so, we're trying to be, we will try to work whatever we can to provide more housing that you have, that live-work environment, and especially during the summertime, during the period from June and July, August, nobody's going to be here, but also September, October, that we have more permanent residences in downtown that go to our restaurants and shop in the retailers.
So, if the cost structures change as a result of these, you know, prevailing wage issues and construction costs and other costs, you wouldn't have to come back to the city and ask for an increased scope, change the scope of the project, you know, build more units, build it higher, or whatever, in order to justify the project?
That would require that I walk away from my $2 million, because a new project would then, would be a completely new project. So, I would try to make it work. The question is, as with every project, we would go out, bid it out, and if the lender is satisfied with the cost structure, then the question is, how much money do I need to invest to make the project feasible? Right now, at the moment, in the current environment, which is a little fragile for the commercial real estate market, you can get a loan to value of costs of about 55% to 60%. So, the balance, the developer has to come up with cash. We are in a very fortunate situation, we have three very good lender relationships, and we have a commitment from a lender to do the project. So, right now, the projected project cost total are around $60 to $65 million. Will that be much higher in three years? Maybe, if the cost will be much higher, that also means that rents would be higher or sales prices will be higher. So, it's always the delta that you play with.
Thank you.
And a piggyback question on the housing element, because in your letter of December 6, 2023, you say, "The top priority of America is housing, blah, 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 blah." But this is for, this is fair market value housing.
Correct.
There's no set aside for low-income seniors, veterans, it's, the problem is not only housing, the problem is affordable housing. Building, I mean, it's a beautiful structure, but I can envision the rents are going to start at like $3,000 a month and go north of that. The problem we have in this city is that people that work as teachers and nurses aides can't afford to live in our city.
I completely agree with you.
Our entitlements, and we don't have an inclusionary ordinance yet, our entitlements, I completely agree with you, but our entitlements on this project don't include.
Okay.
And it's not, that piece of it's not before us.
But to answer your question, I agree with you, we need more workforce housing. Downtown is not the place, or this particular parcel is not the place.
No, I'm not trying to pick on you, I was just...
Commissioner Miller?
Yeah, question, Mr. Braun. The draft development agreement, Section 4.03, the public benefits provided by the developer, did you, your team, come up with those, or was that in conjunction with the city? That's the A, B, C, and D, creation of new housing units, continuing the development of the overall specific plan, creating job opportunities, creating a live-work atmosphere. Are those from your team?
They are from our team and discussed with the city.
Okay. I'm going to have some comments and recommendations for those, because those aren't public benefits under my experience with development agreements.
We'll go back to that later, and then we may bring Mr. Braun up as we talk about those. Are there other questions, and are there other questions of the applicant? Commissioner Liam?
I have a quick one, and I'm honestly not sure if staff will answer this or you will, but since you collaboratively prepared the draft that's before us, there's reference to an expansion project in two places. Is that?
Expansion?
That's 4.01. The parties are acknowledged that this agreement only applies to the project and not to the expansion project. Do you have a...
You mean on the DIR dispute?
No, this is talking about the obligations of the developer. Do you have another project planned beyond this one?
I think we have, so we have Phase One, which are the existing buildings, then we have Phase Two, which is the project that's in front of you, and then we have another project, which is Block F, which people refer to as a baby pit. But that's a project that we're going to come forward with different plans in the future once Block B is completed. But this has nothing to do with, the development has nothing to do with Block F.
Other questions for the applicant? I have one, and that goes to the issue that I raised, and it's for you and your attorney. Do you have any problem with codifying the requirements that are in 7.10 to assess the project city planning director may require any subsequent, any time subsequent to the execution of the agreement and frequently, as annually thereafter, a development plan schedule showing the construction prior to the expiration of this agreement and completion of construction within 24 months? I'd like that either moved or mentioned in 7.09 or included in a separate paragraph that says obligations of the developer under this agreement. I'm not asking for new ones, but I'm asking to have it called out a little more clearly in terms of a schedule.
Are you looking for a construction schedule that we submit to the city that's detailed?
No, I just want to say that you have, the obligation you have is to pull the building permit within the six years of this agreement, you know, finish, finish the permit process, pay for the building permits, and that you'll begin construction and finish it within 24 months, that those are obligations that you take on.
I will take those obligations on, provided that the project is financially feasible at the time when we pull the permit.
Right, and Chris, the language is a little, I mean, it doesn't say provided financially feasible either in this, so, but some clarification of that.
We'll have the attorney respond, and then I can...
I'm okay, we can bolster it, but obviously, if a lender will not provide financing...
No, 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 mainly, I'm looking at the agreement just being clear, not having the provision that you agree to do, you know, to build a project within 24 months, I guess if you're able to do it, but that you have some obligations under the agreement.
Well, just to clarify, if, once we pull the permit, then the project should be built within 18 to 20 months. Yeah, we put 24 months in there just to have a little contingency.
I mean, we're assuming you have the right to pull the permit within six years, correct? Under this agreement?
Yeah.
And so, if you pull the permit, then you will construct within the 24 months, but I just want that spelled out in a place that it's clear, that I can tell people that we've approved something where you're, what you've agreed to is clear.
Sure.
Yeah.
So, if I understand you correctly, what you're, I see exactly what you're talking about, you're looking at Section 7.10 of the annual review. You would like to bolster the language in Section 7.09, timing of project construction completion, to add the language that if we do pull the permit, we will complete construction within 24 months.
Right, yeah.
Okay. You know, the permit is probably close to $2 million, so I'm not going to throw a permit away and then finish the project.
Right, no, and it's just, I just want it clear in that section.
That's reasonable.
So, you would be okay with that?
Yeah, yeah, we're definitely okay with it.
Yeah, they pull a permit, we got to build in two years.
Okay, do we have somebody on the line who wants to speak for public comment?
We don't.
We don't, okay. And nobody in the audience wishes to speak, okay. Are there any other questions of the applicant? We may have some questions in the future as we get to public benefit, but absent that, thank you, but stay close.
Thank you very much.
And the public hearing is closed, the matter is before the commission. First comments before motion. Commissioner Miller?
Yeah, thank you, Chair Wermick. I've dealt with a lot of development agreements in my professional career here in the state of California, working for a large city in the Bay Area, and my experience with those development agreements, there always was a clear set of truly public benefits associated with it. The four items that are listed there are simply recitations of what we want in any project in the downtown area. They have nothing to do with a public benefit. Public benefits that I've been experienced in development agreements include contributions to or development of a public park or other public-serving use, affordable housing provisions, as Carl mentioned, prevailing wages, local hire requirements are often a requirement in, for public benefits to get a development agreement approved, or other public improvements that are not typical to a mixed-use project such as this. So, I need to see some true public benefits if I'm going to support a development agreement of any kind and of any term, time limit on this project.
Additional comments? Commissioner Kalbergine?
Maybe a little bit trying to put a square peg in a round hole by using the development agreement as the method for the extension in this case. I mean, you can do it, but then it brings up all the other stuff that the development agreement should have, which is be the public benefit stuff. I view the whole package downtown of the development of the whole museum marketplace is including an extraordinary number of public benefits that were developed as part of the project, overall project, most of them, I believe, have been implemented, that would be the street system, the park, the city, the developers' contribution to the park... contribution to the park, the various sidewalks, the amenities and all the amenities that we have downtown. Those were public benefits. If, if we had done a development agreement for that, those would be listed as public benefits. Now, we're trying to extract this one project and figure out what its public benefit is when it's really part of a package of the whole museum marketplace. And that's why I'm not convinced that we need, in this case, which I really dislike how we're doing this, as I've pretty much said, but if we're going to do it this way, I don't see additional public benefits of any significance as being as necessary because we already did them and we already built them.
Comments to that? Commissioner Murphy?
I don't have a comment to what Lynn said, but I have another general comment. Is that?
Does anybody else have comments to what Lynn just said? Commissioner Layton?
Yes, I struggled initially when I was reviewing the package and going through and trying to identify, tease out what were public benefits because much like Commissioner Miller and other development agreements that I've seen, you get stuff. The stuff you get are parks. The stuff you get are, are more goodies. They, you get things. And in this project, there aren't, and in this development agreement, there aren't things that we get. However, when I take a step back and look at the, the bigger picture and the part that this plays in the community at a whole, as a whole, I do see things. And that's why I was struggling in part with the language that was in the findings because it wasn't clear to me. And now, as, as I reread it for the 12th time, I understand how it just has different wording for things that are, to me, benefits to the community. Palm Springs has been saddled for the last decade with stalled projects. They are eyesores. They are embarrassments. And we have them sprinkled throughout our commercial district. And our residents and visitors are asked to please walk around the barricades for years because nothing is going on behind them. And if there are things that we can do in a development agreement to increase the likelihood that this will be completed in a single shot without changes in ownership, without bankruptcies, without delays, I think that that is a benefit. I don't see those listed in 4.03. And if we could craft some wording that would replicate kind of what is in the findings, but the, the certainty I see is a benefit to the community. The other thing that I see is that this is, this project is the culmination of, you were saying back to early, the early 2000s, the culmination of a reconstruction and recreation of our downtown, which for those of you who were here in the days of the Fashion Plaza, the, and what it became, and what it did to our downtown, you understand that this vision is, was really remarkable and it was a result of years of planning and input from the community on what the community and the merchants wanted to see downtown because what was downtown was not working. And I think that this developer actually was part of the team to create the vision of what downtown was going to be so that we were an attractive place to be, both for residents and for visitors, and so that we thrived and we had the energy of a downtown. We had a place where residents could gather in a park. We had mixed use. We had things we did not have. What we had was a decaying, if not dead downtown. And I think that anything that we can do that completes the vision that was a result of many years of community planning will be a benefit, a very tangible benefit to the public because the public was a part of planning this, the public wanted to see it, and this helps it come to fruition. Do I like the fact that it's going to extend it for six years? No way. Do I wish that there were other alternatives or somebody to swoop in and build an equally lovely project? Sure. That's not real. That's not one of the options. It's before us. And I think that there is a public benefit in completing a task that was identified and outlined in the vision that was prepared by the community, working with staff, working by developers. So I, I believe that there is public benefit to this. It's just not the tangible stuff that we're used to getting, you know, walking trails and recreational equipment and parks. So I, I would argue that maybe we could reword a little bit 4.03, A, B, C, D, in particular. There was something referring to housing opportunities, responding to our need for additional housing opportunities. I don't think we really need more housing opportunities for upscale housing. So I would say maybe strike item A and substitute instead the argument for ensuring the expeditious completion and reducing the likelihood of stalled or delayed projects and the very tangible move towards completion of the specific plan for the new downtown in Palm Springs.
I just want to speak on that for a moment. And I think I've been here since 2012 and this feels sometimes like it's the only project I work on. So this developer has done some of the things we would normally include in public benefit. Some of the most beautiful art in the city is in the, the walkway adjacent behind, I think, building C. The park, the park has come in, the walkways have come in. There is a sort of half, a couple of halfparks or public spaces on Palm Canyon, seeding, planting. And I, I just think it's been part of the package. A lot of it's built out. What isn't built out in the downtown is building B, building F, Town and Country, and the plaza, of which the plaza is just going to start construction next week, next week, Tuesday. There is an opening, I think, on Monday. There's a, a construction start on that. So to me, the public benefit is finishing this, finishing the downtown and not creating a crisis there that requires us to go back to the drawing board. And I do, our general plan still says that housing at all price points is a priority in the city. We, we might need more affordable housing, but we do need housing downtown to populate the downtown so that our merchants have customers and that people are, people are downtown. So I'm, I just, I just think the public benefits are inartfully drawn here and they could be improved, but I don't think we need additional requirements. And I, and I congratulate the developer in getting folks like Klandesino and the Canopy to be in front of an, an empty lot and also for setting up an art, a graffiti art park, which isn't maybe my favorite form of art, but, but it's still, it's still something that attracts people who frequent downtown. And because of the works that's been done, people come downtown. So if we can redraw this in a way that is clear that we've, we've gotten something and we want it, we want it finished. And that's what we're looking to get. Yes, Commissioner Murphy?
I would agree with everything that's been said. The one thing that makes me the most nervous about it and is, is the duration of the extension. And if there's a way for us to do some conditional approvals or have a step where it's a shorter period of time where we get to take another look, that would make me more comfortable. It's just the timeframe of it where we're, we're really stuck in a way until potentially 2030. And that, that makes me a little nervous.
We've, just trying to think. David, what year did we do the Virgin? Was that 15 or 16?
I believe it was 14. 16.
16. So we've, we don't always have control over what we've approved getting built. I think all we can do is try and create the conditions where it happens. I, I don't like six years, but I don't see, I don't see how we can, that's just me. I'm an attorney. I know, I know how long litigation takes. I think we've got to give them room to get through that.
I would argue that that annual review is, is our mechanism to make sure that this project keeps moving without interruption.
That would satisfy your concern.
And, and also reporting back to us.
Right, Madam Chair. I was, I was going to offer that. Commissioner Murphy, I think the way that it's written, you know, it's, it's really an annual report to me, but I think we would be happy to bring that annually to the commission to keep them updated on the progress and, and the status of, of what's going on. That would be helpful.
Other comments, general comments? Commissioner Miller?
Just one final. First of all, I want to say I do like the project. I didn't mean to come out as if I didn't like the project. Given what both Chair Wermick and Vice Chair Layton have said regarding the general public benefits of the project, even though some of them have been built, the vision of the city, can we, can I get a commitment either today or from the city to adjust 4.03 to sort of bring in some of those things that were mentioned? And that would make me feel a lot more comfortable about sort of the legalities of approving a development agreement for those sort of not typical tangible things that you typically see.
Possibly what we can do is get a rewrite. We're not yet at the motion, but have Commissioner Layton and I look at it on the rewrite on the public benefit and have staff work on that. And I think including, including the sidewalks, including the streets, including the art, including the public parking, job opportunities, wonderful tenants, wonderful and interesting tenants. I mean, all the things that we've gotten from the revised downtown enhance, that those are part of the public benefits we're getting is continuing that and finishing it.
I don't have any opposition to that as staff, and I think we can certainly work that in with your assistance if you wish before this goes to the city or as this goes to the city council. I might just ask if either our attorney who's on the phone or your, or your attorney want to, I think the reason it is written the way that it is is because the development agreement relates to this parcel, right? And some of those broader improvements relate to parcels outside of the, the scope of this agreement. So I just, I don't know if there's a legal rationale around that.
I think we need to talk to the city attorney and get an opinion, but I do agree with the comments made is that we're looking at, we can't look at block B simply in a vacuum. We have to look at the totality of the project and the cohesiveness of finishing out the vision that was started back in 14 and the development in 17. So assuming that we, we can write it that way, I'm all for it.
So I think we're getting to the point of an approval and a motion for an approval with the applicant's agreed to mirror the language in 7, 7.10 in 7.09.
So moved.
And so it's moved with that and some rewrite of the public benefit language. So we've got a motion from Commissioner Caladine. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? There being no discussion, can you call the motion, call the roll, please?
Commissioner Caladine?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Chair Wermick?
Yes.
Vice Chair Alien?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
And Commissioner Rotman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Get it done. And then invite us to the groundbreaking. Okay, moving right along. Does anybody need a break before we go to the next item? You do. So we have a five-minute break.
With the approval of an AMM for parcel two, both lots will ultimately conform to the development standards of the MR zone. The purpose of splitting the lot stems from the fact that the existing building on the project site is considered a Class III site, meaning that it has the potential to be historically designated by the city's Historic Preservation Board. Rather than designating their entire lot, the applicant found it in their best interest to subdivide the lot and separate the two projects entirely. The site currently has three points of access outlined in the green circles above. Once the lot is subdivided, all three access points will remain on parcel one. However, as mentioned previously, the applicant is proposing to convert the building on parcel two into a single-family residence. At that point, the applicant will then be expected to meet the parking standards as well as provide their own access to the project site. The proposed map meets all the required findings and conforms with the zoning and general plan designation. Therefore, staff is recommending the planning commission approve TPM 38635 subject to the conditions of approval. This concludes my report, and the applicant is available for questions.
Questions of staff, Commissioner Rotman?
Yeah, just a quick question. On parcel two, is there a lot coverage limitation? I didn't see that in the staff report, and I'm not sure if there's an issue with that or not.
No, they don't meet the underlying zoning development standard, so there is no issue on that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions? Commissioner Callardine?
Yes, I recorded staff earlier. Staff report notes that the existing curb and gutters are provided on the site on both streets. Do we know if those are at the ultimate location? Or is there some future widening plan for those streets?
So in speaking with the engineering department, where I told that because this is what is before you tonight is simply to split the parcel into two, that would not be necessary. However, when they come back with the development of the other parcel, the would-be vacant parcel, yeah, there will be conditions relative to that.
We don't want to end up with a curb that goes like this around parcel.
No, they will be built to the city's standards.
Okay.
And just to follow up, I think on what Commissioner Callardine, there is no additional right-of-way dedication beyond what's here. That would be shown on the TPM if there was a right-of-way dedication, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
Other questions, Commissioner Layen?
I'm not sure that I'm understanding what happens with parcel two in the event. Okay, so we go ahead and subdivide into two parcels. Parcel two now becomes, I'm guessing, a legal non-conforming. It's a commercial building on a lot without parking that doesn't have parking associated with it. Does that become considered a non-conforming building? Or what happens if the property owner wants to resume the commercial office space use?
So by virtue of going through this process, in some ways, they're surrendering that ability because they would no longer meet parking requirements, et cetera, right? So the parking requirements are met on the adjacent site. That will be sort of no longer there as they go through the development process under the proposal that we see today. So in a world in which, you know, they no longer want to do a single-family home on that property and they look to do a utility use, first of all, commercial uses would not be permitted on that site. So utility use or something like that, if they were looking to do that, they would then need to meet the parking requirements, which they cannot meet there. So they would then have to seek relief through some other mechanism, which we would have to evaluate.
And does the applicant understand that they're being backed into that?
Yes, they do understand that.
Thank you.
Just a question with that, what year was the building built? 1959, so. 1969, does it qualify? I mean, I think our code allows commercial without parking if it's a historic building.
Sorry, historic buildings do get a little bit of leniency when it comes to parking standards. So that will be evaluated once it goes through the HSPB process, if parking is required.
You're not. I'm looking at our former HSPB commissioner. But that's my understanding. So would it actually? I don't have a, it's a gorgeous building if it was.
We would still, in my, I believe, have a zoning conflict because we are essentially changing the conditions under which the lot is operating, right? So I think that as a.
So are we changing the zoning with this lot?
Well, by virtue of the subdivision, they would have to meet the standards that are in place today. So we would have to look at what we can accommodate through the relief given to historic buildings, commercial parking requirements. We would have to go through an evaluation process if that's what they were looking to do because they're changing the conditions on the site.
So it's, from what the answer I've heard, it's not going to change my support for this. It sounds like it's a little open because it's a historic building, and they may have more opportunities as to what to do with it.
They may.
Do, this is just a question for staff. Do we know? Do you know what they may be coming back? It won't impact our discussion, but do we know how many units they're looking at putting here?
They're interested in putting about 15 units on parcel one.
Exciting.
One five.
A follow-up on that. What would, do you know off the top of your head, what would the zoning allow there as the maximum number of units?
I believe the math was actually done by Commissioner Lynn. Twenty-one maximum units. Twenty-one.
Minimum of eight and a maximum of 21. So they're within the density requirements of the general plan in the zoning.
Yes.
And that's just parcel two, not including what might be on parcel one?
That's actually including, that's just parcel one.
Correct.
That's right, yes.
If you looked at the lots together, you would be looking at up to 28. But because we're going through the subdivision process, looking just at Lot 1, 21 would be the maximum. Lot 2, it's a little bit of a more complicated conversation again because of the presence of the historic building.
You have a question? Are you?
Kind of, yeah, question. Just wanted to ensure that what happens when Lot 2 comes in for redevelopment? Will we be able to make a general plan finding that it's consistent with the general plan if it only has one unit on it?
Because it's an existing building and because of the historic nature of it, we feel that there are exceptions that allow us to make.
We're not going to get hung up on needing three units on parcel one just because the general plan says six, minimum, six units per acre.
Correct.
Commissioner Layen, you had a question?
I apologize, Chair, I forgot to ask this. In the findings, number one and two, they directly contradict one another. The first says that the subject site is not located within a specific plan area, and the second one says the design is entirely consistent with the Section 14 specific plan.
That's an error on my part. It is entirely located within the Section 14 specific plan.
Okay, so when we get to motions, we could delete the wrong part. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? The public hearing is open. The applicant has 10 minutes. And you don't have to take all of it.
May I?
Yes.
Hello, hi, my name is Charles Mesrahi. Thanks for having me here. And if you have any question? I mean, this is a project that I've been working on for the past, I want to say, five years almost. May will become five years since I've owned this project. So the project had its own kind of like evolution it went through. You know, a lot of variety of site plan. I worked with my architect, and we went back and forth. We collaborated with the planning department. I had a lot of crazy ideas, but none of them really panned out. In the beginning, actually, I even had Riverside County Health as a tenant. We had signed the lease, they were ready to go. I even submitted my plans for the Riverside County. And then on the last minute, they bailed out. They decided that they want to go next door. They built their own structure. So that like, and then COVID hit and, you know, blah, blah, blah. So now here I am, so working with my architect. And so we came up with this crazy idea, and I do that a lot. You know, I do come up with a lot of ideas that are not typical, and I usually have success in my ideas. The other project that I've developed here in the city is the corridor. So it's been successful for the past 20 years. Everybody kind of questioned that in the beginning, but I pulled it through. And with this one, I'm very passionate about this building. I would like to turn it into a single-family home. We even looked at multi, divide into multiple residents, and that won't go through very well because the building is historic. And to do that, we have to make a lot of penetration and add more windows and so forth. So that would destroy the, and I don't even think the Historical Society would even approve that. The building currently is on the Historical Society watch list. It's not yet designated as Class III or Class IV, too. But I'm in the process, working with the historical group. And in fact, I already put my application in for the meeting next month for that hearing to see where that will go. But I'm super passionate about this project, and I know it's going to look phenomenal.
Any questions of the applicant? Commissioner Murphy?
It may have been in the report, and I missed it. I'm just wondering if the multi, the 15-unit building, is that going to be rental apartments or condominiums or what? Do you know?
We designed it as condominium, but we're moving forward as apartment. So in case if it ever needs to be converted to condominiums, we have that option. We are in compliance with all the, you know, parking and, you know, for the facility.
Thank you.
Again, a follow-up to, Commissioner Murphy just said, does it make sense or is it possible for him to put a condo map over parcel one at this time so he doesn't have to come back for a condo map?
So that was an option that we did not consider with the application that is before you tonight. But however, if in the future it turns out to be a condominium project, it will have to come back before you as a one-lot condo map.
And they couldn't somehow amend it through this process now so they don't have to come back?
It is possible to process it as an amendment to the current map, assuming it's fine out before then. Yes, possible.
So that's an idea for you to mull over and think about? That isn't before us tonight, though. Anything else? Thank you. There's nobody in the public who wants to testify. Is there? I had one.
My computer just crashed, so I don't have access to the Zoom. There was one person in it. So I'm trying to coordinate with our IT tech to see if he's still in the Zoom. But I don't see anyone else in the audience. So maybe give us a minute if you want to continue with discussion, and we can reach the person that was on the website. We can come back to them.
Okay, well, so I won't close the public hearing. But maybe what, I can let you sit down and maybe we can begin our deliberations?
The person who's observing is not speaking.
Oh, they're speaking, okay.
They're not speaking.
Oh, they're not speaking. Okay, the public hearing is closed. The matter is before the commission. I don't sense opposition to this. So I'm sensing the need for a motion with some changes to the findings. Commissioner Layen, do you want to make the motion?
I would move approval. And with the caveat that we delete the last sentence from finding number one.
Second?
So we have, is there any discussion? Seeing none, call the roll.
Commissioner Aelian?
Yes.
Commissioner Callardine?
Callardine?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Rotman?
Yes.
Yes.
And Chair Womack?
Yes. Best of luck to you. Okay, we.
Thank you and thank you for the corridor.
Which one is the corridor?
We're saying thank you for the corridor.
Thank you for the corridor. It's a wonderful part of Palm Springs. It's unique, it reflects the city, it's, I love it. Coffee North?
Oh, where coffee, oh, where coffee is the.
Where Coffee North is.
First coffee, originally.
Oh, Coffee North is, he owns it? Oh, my goodness.
He did that whole development.
Oh, my goodness. It's just wonderful. Okay, moving right along to new business, a request by PLC Communities LLC for the approval of final development plans for 71 single-family residents on 65-foot lots within the Phase II section of Merlon Development located at 801 Sunrise Way, PDD 290, Section 35. At this, we're going to move this to what date?
So we are tentatively going, and this is not a public hearing notice, so we don't have to continue it to date certain, but our intent is to try and bring it back on March 13th.
So show, is the motion to, to continue this?
I believe you already covered it when you set the agenda and excluded it from the agenda.
Oh, so we excluded it, perfect. Okay, commission, planning commission reports, requests and comments. Yes?
On the previous item, can we get staff to take a look at the status of the Sunrise Parkway extension when that project comes back? Because at some point, that's going to get triggered with the development of, the continued development of Merlon and I think we really need to trigger that soon.
We will be prepared to speak to that when it comes back.
Oh, the Parkway extension of Sunrise Parkway?
Sunrise to Sunrise.
Yeah, there's both Sunrise Parkway and there's also the exit that hasn't opened up and I don't know if that's included. An entrance and exit that we've had comments about on every Merlon project from homeowners there.
I'm not familiar with what those triggers are, so we will discuss it and be prepared for that when it comes back.
Okay, planning, any reports from Commissioner Rotman?
Yeah, could we get an update on the new state laws that affect all the housing and everything else that's coming, that came down the pike?
Yes, and there are several interesting ones that I don't feel prepared to speak to tonight because I don't want to misspeak, but we, actually David sat in earlier on a webinar about some of those changes and so I need to get the readout on those and we'll bring that back on March 13th.
And we still have, you're going to still do city council priorities?
Right, so do you want me to give my updates now and then?
Do people, would you like that now or in a separate session? I think it would be good to have it now.
Well, sorry, I don't have it ready for tonight, but as part of my updates, I was going to say, I did hear that that request was made, it was a night that I wasn't here. I'm just working to gather enough information to bring it to you in terms of what exactly that looks like. So I was intending to do that at the next meeting. And another request that you had made at the last meeting was to discuss the zoning code update that is going to get underway. So I will, I will circulate the contract that was approved by the city council at their meeting, just so you can sort of see what we're looking at and what's in there. I will say that I'm meeting with the team early next week to start to flush out what that process is going to look like as well as the schedule. One of the things that we will do in fairly short order is a study session with you all in terms of starting to work on priorities and what we should be tackling as part of that process. Obviously, the main goals are we need to ensure consistency with the general plan update that's underway and the commitments that have been made in the housing element that the state has finally approved. We have all the changes to state law that we need to implement and then we have sort of a huge laundry list of things that we know are just kind of out of date or not sort of, you know, the progressive approach to planning that I know we discuss a lot and that the city council has directed us to look at. So we have a lot of work to do and we'll be certainly very interested in all of your feedback as we go through the process, but I will have hopefully a fuller update on that next time as well.
I have.
We also had a request in for a presentation on the airport.
Yes, thank you. So they are working through a whole host of different things going on at the airport right now, but the, but I've spoken to the airport team and they would like to come and speak to you. They were thinking probably second meeting in April, so that is, that is being tracked.
I have two items. One is that I've talked with people at the Desert Water Agency about a tour for the planning commissioners and staff, especially since we're changing the zoning code, we should be looking at environmental issues that include our aquifer. I'm wondering if people here are interested in that kind of tour and if we set it up, if you would be interested in doing it. I'm sensing unanimity there. I did a couple of them when I started on the commission years ago and they were some of the most valuable things I've done on the commission. The second is just to mention an outside passion of mine, which is that the Plaza Theater is starting construction next week and there will be a small ceremony at 11 o'clock on Monday outside of the plaza. And thanks to both great fundraising and incredibly generous allocation of funds and loan from the city, the city loaned, gave $10 million and loaned $10 million. The plaza is actually getting into construction and it'll be a full historic rehab with, and we're also beginning to look at what our programming will be the day we open. The library is going, maybe you can pick that up? I know it's.
I know it's working through process in terms of working, let me bring a fuller update at the next meeting because I don't want to misspeak at where it is in process. I do have one additional item, if I might, and that's just to say that earlier this week, there was sort of a ribbon cutting and opening ceremony for the Monarch Apartments. I know the planning commission was involved with that process at the time. I think a few of you might have been there, but exciting news to have affordable housing in the north end of Palm Springs come online, one of those projects that we've seen realized and I think it looks really great and we're excited to start getting people into those apartments.
And would you send out to the commission, there's the opening of the Navigation Center?
Yes.
Which is up and coming and it's always nice for us to see, even though we're not, we haven't been involved in the Navigation Center, I think it would be good for us to see that. Yes.
I've actually been involved with it from the beginning and I'm on the community advisory board and I'm taking a tour of it with the rest of the board on Thursday, tomorrow. So I'll give a report for those that are interested.
Not the Monarch, but the ALO. How is the ALO doing? How far into construction are they?
I think they're still doing site work, but it's progressing.
So, but you'll let us know about the opening ceremony for the Navigation Center?
Yes, yeah, absolutely. I'll pass that around.
And then is there a director's report and can you tell us about what's happening with Starbucks?
I thought we were going to get out of here without talking about that. That is going to city council tomorrow night again, so as you recall, you all decided on it in a fairly split vote back in the fall. It went to the Architecture Review Committee, who did ultimately approve it as well with a lot of discussion and then, of course, it was called up by the city council and heard in December by them. I think a lot of this discussion focused around whether there should be an indoor dining room, whether there should at least be walk-up access, you know, how do pedestrians and others access the site so that we don't just kind of have a drive-through use there. The applicant at that time was willing to continue to work with staff on making changes to the site plan so that we've been, and so the city council granted them, under the code, they are allowed to extend the timeframe for them to make a decision on a call up to 90 days, so that is coming up in March. And so we've been working with them since on changing the plans. They've made some substantial revisions. Just in a brief summary, they've reoriented the building so that it is along the Vistachino frontage, I'm sorry, Racket Club frontage. They've done some reorientation to the drive-through, they've added some additional landscaping, they've reconfigured a bit of the parking, but they've also added a walk-up window and a patio around the same size as the one, if you think about the one by Albertson's at Sunrise and Vistachino, a similar type of patio to what's there. The difference being that instead of walking in and getting your coffee inside the store, there will instead be a walk-up window that you can order and pick up a coffee and that will be on the east side of the building. On the west side of the building, at the corner of Racket Club and Palm Canyon, they've also proposed essentially a parcat, a mini sort of park and community gathering space, they're calling it, that would have seating and landscaping where you could also take your coffee down there and sit and it would be accessible and open to members of the community. So that is their response to what they've heard from the community and the council and that will go to council tomorrow night for their consideration and we'll see what decision they make on that.
And is there still a drive-through?
There is still a drive-through, yes.
Earl, that was a big discussion item before this commission, just how to do that corner.
That was a very big one and we improved the size of that patio.
A lot of work went into that and the other corner where the Starbucks is.
So we will see what happens, but I will certainly keep you updated. Thank you for asking.
And with that, we are adjourning until Wednesday, 5:30 Wednesday, March 13th.